Okay, I see by the clock on the wall, it is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the order, the Tuesday, January 2, 2024, meeting in the Mound Planning Mr. City Manager, I think you are up first with swearing in of planning commissioners.
Sir.
All right, well, if I can have Mr. Baker.
I gotta come up.
If you would across the podium, or you can call it out, either way. Mr. Baker, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jason Baker.
I, Jason Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of planning commissioner.
Of planning commissioner.
Of the city of Mound, Minnesota.
Of the city of Mound, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. I'd like to get you to sign here. I will attest, and we will be done with the formalities for you. Thank you. Ms. Chank?
Congratulations.
Ms. Whacker is not with us tonight, so this will be the next meeting. And Ms. Young.
Yes.
Come on down.
First meeting.
Welcome. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kristin Young.
I, Kristin Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of planning commissioner.
Of planning commissioner.
Of the city of Mound, Minnesota.
Of the city of Mound, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And if you would autograph here.
Eric, on behalf of the Planning Commission, we would like to thank you for your service and leadership, and wish you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Good. If I could, for just a moment.
You're kidding.
Thank you. Commissioners, many of you have heard me say this before, but thank you. You have volunteered to do something in this community that's hard work, but it's very important work. Your work here defines and preserves the character of our community. Your work here defines and preserves the value of private property in our community. Those things are extremely important, and for those of you who know a little bit about my history, you know that I have been places in the world where private property rights don't exist. I've been places in the world where this fabric that we call a municipality, a community, a town, a city, doesn't exist, and it changes fundamentally the way people are able to live and the way people are able to prosper. And that starts right here in this room with your work as planning commissioners, and it carries forward to the council. Ms. McInaney, thank you, and the rest of the council, and carries forward into the policy, into the decisions that are made that make this community mound and make this community what it is. And that's hard work. You will be asked by your friends, you'll be asked by your neighbors, you'll be asked by people who you don't know to make decisions about what they can do with their land, what entities can do to change the shape and the character of our community with lands that they wish to acquire. And that's hard work. The rules, the book, the zoning that Sarah and Rita work with is not an easy read, but becoming familiar with that and being able to navigate that is important work, but it's not, again, easy. And so I thank you for stepping forward, all of you, but in particularly tonight, Mr. Baker, Ms. Whacker, who isn't here tonight, and Ms., I'm sorry.
Young.
Ms. Young, Kristin, for stepping forward to do that good work. And so I appreciate your acknowledgement of my work, but more so, I turn that back on you and my appreciation and the community's appreciation for your work. With that, I will leave you to your agenda and your business, and leave you to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thanks for solving.
All right, next on the agenda is roll call, Jen.
Commissioner, Archibald.
Here.
Commissioner Rosner.
Here.
Commissioner Saps.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
And council member McInaney.
Here.
And a formal welcome to Kristin.
Thank you.
To our body. Okay, next we have on the agenda, election of chair and vice chair. Chair would entertain a motion regarding chair of the commission.
I would like to make a motion to elect Commissioner Good as chair.
Second. A motion and a second. Let's also, let's also, let's move on to position of vice chair. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Baker for vice chair of the commission.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, we can either do a voice vote on these nominations, or we can do a written vote. Does anybody want to do a written vote?
No.
No.
Hearing none, chair would call for affirmation of election of Commissioner Good and Commissioner Baker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion carries. Thank you for your support. Review and approval of agenda, we have any amendments, Sarah?
No amendments on this agenda for January 2nd, '24.
Motion to approve the agenda as distributed with no amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Review and action on Planning Commission minutes, we have the minutes in the November 21 special/ rescheduled meeting that were in your packet. Chair would entertain a motion on those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes for November 21st special rescheduled meeting as distributed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We also have minutes of the December 5, 2023 regular meeting of the commission. Chair would entertain a motion on those minutes.
Motion to approve the December 5 regular meeting minutes as distributed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Order of adjustment and appeals, review slash recommendation of planning case 23-16.
Oops. Something's happened.
And Ms. Rita.
Oh, there it is. It's just coming out real slowly, yes. All right. Looks darker than usual, doesn't it? Maybe the, I don't know.
It looks about right.
Does it?
Yes.
Oh, I feel like it. Well, good. I'm glad that you're happy. That's good. All right, it's good evening. Chairman, members of the commission, members of public, I'm Rita Trapp, planning consultant for the city. The request before you is to vacate right-of-way and drainage and utility easements. I want to note that this case is a little bit different than the cases that you normally see, so you might have, you again, like last time, are going to have me kind of narrow your focus to actually what the application is for, which is going to be challenging for us, but really, it's about vacating right-of-way and easements. It's not really about anything else, which is a little bit different. Normally, that is something that the city council looks at. If that happens without you necessarily weighing in on that, but because this is a planning-related case where they're going to do development related to a house construction, we're asking for you to review and approve it. Oftentimes, you'll see this as part of a bigger project, but this is really part of a building permit process. So location-wise, the property in question is at 2970 Oaklawn Lane. As you can see, it's at the corner of Oaklawn and Idlewood Road. The site is zoned R1A, and it is guided low-density residential. The site, as you can see, currently has a significant amount of the property between the property line and the actual roadway where it's constructed that is part of the right-of-way, and it has more so than most of the properties in the nearby vicinity. The request is that the city vacate the right-of-way and the drainage and utility easements. That kind of goes hand in hand. I think more of our focus today is on the right-of-way aspect of this rather than the drainage and utility easements. As you are aware, drainage and utility easements are required along all property lines for almost every property in the city. Any modern property, when it's subdivided, we request drainage and utility easements. That's to ensure that nothing can get built in those areas, and we can protect the ability of going in and having any stormwater that needs to be managed, any utilities that need to go through. As was noted in the conditions, if this would move forward, you would reestablish the drainage and utility easements along the property line. It's just that unless you formally vacate them, they exist forever, and so if you wouldn't do that, you wouldn't be able to build in that location. So really, the drainage and utility easements have kind of, it's kind of a question of can we vacate them so we can reestablish them at the end of the process? Really, the question in the heart of the matter is, is it appropriate that the city would determine that the right-of-way in the vicinity is not needed for public purposes any longer, and it makes sense for it to be given back to the property? As you can see, the diagram, the purple line, is the current property boundary. The applicant is requesting to square it off, to have the right-of-way that is currently not being used for that kind of purpose back into their property. As you are all aware, right-of-way is something that you see on paper, but really, you can't see on the ground. Your property, all, almost everybody in Mound, I can't say everybody because there are plenty of unique situations, but almost everybody has a portion of their front yard, corner yard, that is in right-of-way that you maintain and take care of, and you can't see it. It's really something that you can see on paper, and the same situation would be here is that they would continue to maintain it, it's just that it's not in their personal land to be able to do something with. It is part of the city right-of-way. Also, the setbacks for the property are impacted by where the property lines are. So the farther back from the road that the property lines are, the farther the setbacks are, the less buildable area that is, there is for this lot. As is noted in the packet, this lot was created as part of a three-lot subdivision. It's already assumed to be buildable and be able to have a residential property. It's over 6,700 square feet in size. It is an odd shape, by all means, but technically, it does meet the minimum lot size requirements for this district. The applicant is seeking to construct a single-family home. The question today is not really whether or not they should construct a single-family home. It's already a buildable lot, that's something that can be done with a buildable, building permit. This is, the question is, is it acceptable that the city may vacate that portion of the property that's not being used for right-of-way purposes and have it go back to the property? A little bit of history for everybody. The way that right-of-way gets established is that when a property is subdivided, if needed, the property owner, the developer, needs to dedicate a certain amount of land for the purposes of streets. The size of that right-of-way is developed, is decided at the time of that plat. If you vacate right-of-way, the land goes back to the plat that dedicated it, in essence, back to the lot, from which that property, that right-of-way, would have been given. So in this case, this particular area, the right-of-way, would go back to this lot. That isn't always the situation, but that's what it would be with this lot today. As we said in the packet, this was distributed for our typical staff, consultant, agency, consultant review. Most of the comments that we received were related to the utilities. So CenterPoint Energy noted that there aren't any issues, the gas mains are located outside of the property lines, and they don't have any objections. MediaCom just had a possible concern related to power line relocation. That'll have to be resolved if the power line does in fact get relocated. And Excel Energy talked about being in contact with the landowner regarding the relocation of utilities. It's the responsibility of the landlord, or the property owner, in order to move any needed power lines. It's not the responsibility of Excel Energy or the city, and so that's something that's already in process and somewhat outside of our process. The city engineer did review the location of the driveway preliminarily. The driveway seems like it's in an acceptable location, given where it is relative to the corner, but obviously, that'll be continued to reviewed as building permits plans move through the process. As was noted in the packet, this is a non-lot of record, meaning that it was created at a fairly recent time, so it is held to the regular standards, including a maximum hardcover of 30%. So there will be, that will be a limitation of this site. The applicant, as is, in the application materials, there is an outline for a proposed house and garage. Those do seem to meet setback requirements and hardcover maximums. Again, it's a building permit at that point, that's not really under consideration for you. The consideration is whether or not it's acceptable for the right-of-way to be released back to the property. However, if you wouldn't do it, obviously, the building plans as submitted don't work. So we do recognize that, but the question that you're being asked today is, is it acceptable for the right-of-way to be vacated for use back by this property? The city engineer, Public Works, has reviewed this, and they say that the area to be vacated is not requested, or not needed, I mean, for city operations. It really, right now, the way it's configured doesn't really match other city blocks in the community and kind of how the city does that. It's a local road, they're not anticipating making it any wider, and nor do they feel like they need additional right-of-way. Drainage and utility easements, as I said, will need to be reestablished after the lot is changed, and that'll be done by the city attorney, which is standard procedure for our process. This is not a public hearing, though you always have the opportunity to have comments from the public if they should attend this evening. The property owners nearby were notified of the meeting tonight, once we were sure that we were moving forward with this meeting. So there may be people that are in attendance that would like to make comments or ask questions. Technically, it's not a public hearing. That's something that actually statutorily is required by the city council. It also involves an extra notice, two weeks' mail published notice for vacations. So that's something that we will have to go through, and that's why the process, if you would recommend approval and it moves to the city council, is a little bit longer than it normally is because it takes more time for the public hearing notices to be distributed and sent. With that, staff is recommending approval, given the fact particularly that engineering and public works feels like they don't need the right-of-way for a public purpose, which is really the standard that statute asks, is there a public need for that right-of-way to be in the city's ownership? If it doesn't, the city traditionally looks for opportunities to give it back to property owners, put it back on the tax rolls, have actual use of it. The biggest benefit to this property, obviously, is that their setbacks shift, and they have a little bit more room to maneuver on that lot. Either way, the lot is considered an R1A lot that is buildable, so that doesn't change with the vacation or not the vacation, it's just how much space do we want to provide a house so that they can make something that makes sense and work? With that, I can answer any questions that you may have. I suppose I should go through this? Discuss the request, and then you have one of three actions this evening. You can table the request if you need additional information. You can recommend approval or denial. Staff did provide findings and conditions for your consideration in the packet, and I certainly can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions for Rita or comments to Rita?
So I guess I had one question, you kind of touched on it, was that if we are getting rid of the right-of-way now, you said later on, we determine, we do the next easements, right?
So we would vacate both the right-of-way and the utility easements right now, and then once the lot has been, the survey has been created and we create the lots, at that time, a drainage, utility easement will be drafted and established along the property boundaries, just like a normal lot would have it. It's just we need to add the right-of-way into the property and then reestablish drainage and utility easements.
So then if they build a conforming house, it would never come back to us, right?
Correct.
We don't need to do anything?
Correct.
Okay.
That's why I keep kind of talking about it. It's a little bit odd because normally, you guys, you see these as part of bigger projects, right? We're going to vacate things, we're going to, this is just vacate, and then everything else can be handled administratively with a building permit, in theory, as of right now with the materials we've seen right now. If they build conforming, you would not see it again.
Rita, I just have one question. I think all this is really clear, but the last condition that's listed.
Yes.
Is a bit odd. I don't think I've usually seen, and other things to be determined as a condition. Can you just explain what was meant there?
Is it eight additional conditions from staff, the planning commission, and the council?
Yeah.
Oh, actually, we have that language in there typically for you at this stage of the process, and then when we draft the resolution, it comes out. So it's just recognizing that through your discussion, we may come up with additional conditions that are imposed.
So if we add a condition?
If you add a condition, if after your, sometimes after your discussion, we're like, oh, that's a really good point, we should really clarify that, we might add conditions. So that's, that's our, mostly, it's a warning.
Okay.
Alerting the applicant that just because this is the list doesn't mean the list might not change between now and the.
So barring any discussion, we would motion for conditions one through seven?
You could, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you do eight, it's fine. What happens is we make the final resolution based on your discussion, and you'll, and usually, that one goes away.
Okay.
Good point. Commissioner Saps.
Yeah, but I don't think it's really critical that you can't say eight. It doesn't matter because we always make adjustments or things that we learn to make it precise, and the city attorney reviews things. So the conditions that you approve are, you're approving generally, and then we get precise when we get to the resolutions to make sure they all work and make sense and.
Okay. I thought everything else was clear. Thanks.
Yeah, quick question, to be at the hypothetical. If a sidewalk is put up there, are we giving up the right for that sidewalk, or how does that work? I don't see a sidewalk now, but in future, is there like maybe, how does that work? Do they get access? Do they have, how does that work?
I struggle a little bit because working so long here, I know that sidewalks don't appear to be in the plans for most neighborhoods. So.
It's probably not going to happen.
Yeah.
Probably, all right.
Yeah.
Just curious.
You could change your minds.
Yeah.
And you could do. As of right now, the policy hasn't been to have sidewalks on most streets, just because it's the cost and the effort, and the right-of-way is not conducive to it in most locations. But you could always do an easement also.
You can't do that.
If you got to that point, that would be an option. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, further questions or comments to Rita?
Well, being new, I got kind of a stupid question.
You don't, there are no stupid questions.
Is there any reason we wouldn't approve it? You don't have to come up with one if there isn't one, but I, I'm just, I can't see a reason to.
Generally, we rely on the technicians, including Sarah and myself, that if the, if the engineering and public works doesn't feel like they need the right-of-way, and it's similar to the other properties, then no.
Okay.
If they started to raise those concerns, or there was a utility company that had a major concern, then we probably, then we would have flagged it instead. Ah, but otherwise, it'll be, it will be similar to surrounding properties.
Thank you.
Yes. That's a good question. There's no, no dumb questions.
Further questions for Rita? Further comments? Okay, hearing none, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna, do you want me to turn on the lights?
Maybe turn on.
Please.
You got it?
I can do it.
It's my one thing.
I know. I'm sure. I can do it.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like your approach to the commission regarding this request? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Dale Mara. I'm with, I'm at 4945 Grandview Avenue in Minutrista, the Red Oakville. I am the applicant, so if you have any questions for me, I can answer it. Just a quick clarification on the Excel piece, it actually was myself that was in contact with Excel, you know, just to get logistics of it, is it feasible, costs, and then also, I want to, I would propose to do some underground lines to take some of the overhead, you know, unsightly piece of it, so that's a piece of it too, but I'm here for any questions if you, if you have any.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to approach the commission regarding this proposal? Okay, seeing none. One more round through the commission, any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, on page 19 of your agenda, you see staff recommending, planning commission recommending approval of the proposed vacation of right-of-way and drainage and utility easements with conditions one through seven, and findings one through three. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll motion that planning commission recommend approval of case 23-16, the vacation of the right-of-way utility easements and drainage easements, subject to the conditions one through seven, and the findings of fact one, two, and three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. Annual review of planning commission work rules, staff is recommending we table this to our February 6 meeting. Is that correct, Sarah?
That is correct, Chair Good. I did include in your packet the most current set of the work rules that were adopted in March, and so it'll give you maybe a little bit of time to kind of read through them and then be in a position maybe that we talk a little bit about the work rules and any changes for '24.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to table review of work rules until the February 6 meeting.
Second.
No, make a motion to postpone the annual review of planning commission work rules to the February 6 regularly scheduled meeting for the planning commission.
Okay, Commissioner Heel seconded. Discussion. Hearing none?
Sarah, quick question. Do you want us to, any changes you want to submit prior to the meeting?
Um.
Or recommendations, or just talk about it during the meeting?
We can, you, I, you're welcome to email them to me, otherwise, just be ready to talk about them at the meeting, I think, is what we've done in the past.
All right, thank you.
And is this just a typical annual review?
Yeah, it's required by the work rules. I'll give you a couple of quick examples, like last year, we added in that the meetings were being videotaped. The year before, the year before that, I think we added in language that in the event we needed to go electronic or off-site, that we had that option. It's kind of an evolving document that helps us with protocol. What happens if both chair and vice chair are gone? We did run into that one time, but it does help us with meeting management, and also just overall maintenance of the planning commission's documents and things.
So what's published here is what we adopted?
Yes.
Already?
Yes.
And there aren't any kind of major recommendations or changes coming forward? We're just going to discuss them?
I just think if members of the planning commission have items, that we talk about them at the meeting.
Great.
The one thing is, and I always just say is, if we're, if we're not going to be at the meeting, or if something comes up to notify us, because we need that for forum, that's always been, I think, probably one of the most important things, just so we know ahead of time. Because if I don't hear from anybody, I'm kind of counting on you, and granted, I know that things pop up, so, anyway. But thank you.
Further questions? Comments? Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, discussion recommendations about available dates to schedule 2024 annual concurrent meeting with city council for the 2024 work plan and 2023 review. Do you have any thoughts about this, Sarah?
Well, we, we try and do it in February if we can with the, which is generally our third meeting date, which would, if it'd be February, it'd be the second, it'd be the 20th. From time to time, we have had to go into March, just because of scheduling. And I mean, I granted, that's the third month, but I also know that we have a new city manager starting, and I know we have, the council has handfuls of things that they're working on, so I just, I don't want to only lock them into one date that works for you all. We do try and stay on the Tuesdays, because it works for you, and it works for the council. So the two I would throw out would be preferred being the twentieth of February, with the alternate being the nineteenth of March, which would both be third Tuesdays.
Anybody have any problems with those dates?
I cannot do the February date.
Any other?
The only comment with the March nineteenth is that it gets close to the spring break for kids, but.
Yep.
Schools goes till the twenty-first that week, so it should be okay. At least for me.
Okay, other?
Do we need to make a motion?
Uh, yes, if you could, to offer up, if those are both possible dates, where the, where a good portion of you would be able to attend, those would be this, the first slate of dates.
Is it unofficial to, to do it earlier because of the new city manager's starting, or do you want to wait until March?
I, I just don't know.
Or just put those two dates?
Well, I know we've got a workshop.
Yeah, there is.
Two workshops coming up. It's kind of a crazy.
I just don't know what, I don't know what those dates are for your February shop. It might already be taken.
The Thursday.
Well, your, yours are Thursday, then we probably.
Well, the workshop's Thursday.
Yeah.
I think it's that Thursday of the week of the twentieth.
Oh, so it would be the twenty-second.
Yeah, I think that is it.
And then it's also the day, it's the day following President's Day.
Am I reading here also that we're canceling the March fifth meeting in lieu of a March nineteenth meeting for us? So would that not be a good day for our joint?
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, the nineteenth, yes, thank, yeah, I remember.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, so we got to try for the twentieth, because we have to cancel the fifth because of primary, so my meeting, our meeting is going to be on the nineteenth. Thank you for that. I knew I'd forgotten something. So I guess.
We're on the nineteenth of February.
No, but she's saying the nineteenth of March.
Nineteenth of March.
Look, look at C one.
Look at C one.
Yeah. So do we just make a motion that we shoot for the February twentieth?
Yep, and if it doesn't work, we'll have to come back for, we'll have to find another date.
So I'll make a motion that we.
Thank you.
Recommend as the available date for the concurrent meeting with city council to be February twentieth. If that does not work, schedule it with the planning commission.
Yes, and I'll reach out to Mr. Good, too.
Okay. You heard the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, we have three suggested cancellations and reschedules. You see them as C one, two, and three on the agenda.
Yep. This, this should be for the year, I believe, at least as of now, as provided by the clerk, the, the March fifth is presidential nomination primary, then August is the annual night-to-unite, which is the event that a lot, a lot of Planning Commission and community members partake. And then the November is federal election, and so that meeting also gets scooched from November fifth to November nineteenth. So these are changes that should get us through the end of the year, short of something that gets added in or scheduled. So those are the three meeting day changes for twenty-twenty-four as of now.
Okay, any comments or observations about these? Hearing none, can we do one motion?
Yes, yes, you can.
That incorporates all three?
You bet.
So I'd like to make a motion to cancel the Tuesday, March fifth, twenty-twenty-four, Tuesday, August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and Tuesday, November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Commission, and create new special meetings for the Planning Commission on Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, and Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Kathy, any comments from the council?
You know, I'm still in sort of Christmas fog. I feel like I'm a long time ago. I know at our last meeting, Eli Hert, they grown, passed.
Right.
And I guess other than that, hopefully, we'll get to see everybody at some portion of Eric's retirement party on Thursday.
Okay, so did every, speaking of that, did everybody get that email today?
Yep.
About two invitations, if I'm not incorrect? One is twelve to two on Thursday.
And that's here.
And that's here.
Yep.
And the other is four-thirty and beyond.
Right.
At Surfside, correct?
Yep, and we have prepared a notice of possible quorum. The deputy city manager did, so that members of the council, Planning Commission, and Parks Board are able to attend and partake as your availability allows.
Sorry for interjecting.
Well, I know Eric is looking forward to having as many people as are wanting to come with him, so. And that's all I got.
That's all you got, okay, thank you. Sarah?
I don't have much either. Sort of, I agree, we're kind of in the holiday fog, day after New Year's. I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday. I, I appreciate all the extra work that you put in towards the end of the year, and, Kristen, welcome. It's always nice to have a full complement of members, and so I'm grateful to have you with us. We will be reaching out to Ms. Young independently to schedule some in-house training. It's kind of a half afternoon, I know a lot of you've gone through it, Nick and Derek, and it's kind of a two- to three-hour thing, really informal, but we, we call it Landys one-on-one, but we'll get you up to speed as quick as we can. And what I'll do is, I'll reach out to you personally with some dates. Great. And then we can either do it in the morning, or we can do it in the afternoon, whatever works best for your schedule. We do it right in-house upstairs with AV, and it's very informal, and, and we'll have the city manager step in and say hello. But we'll reach out the next couple of days with that. Okay. Other things that's happening, like I said, last month, events are already coming out of the woodwork. The Polar Plunge, I think, is the last Saturday in January, it's the twenty-seventh. That's super exciting. We're busy with project management. Artessa has been busy, as you can see, is coming out of the ground, out of the ground. Lots of activities with construction management and building permits, and always nice to see folks are still interested in, in doing stuff, and well, whether it's a demo, an addition, a replacement, or any sort of remodel interior, exterior, the phones just don't stop ringing. So I guess that's a good thing. Fern, I reached out to the Fern folks, which is the townhouses behind Commerce Place, just to check in. They have granted us an extension until, I think, September or May, I can't remember which, I think we extended. But we do anticipate hearing from them soon. Stephanie Aldana thought that they'd get back to us sometime this week. I just, I kind of wanted to feel them out in terms of when I can expect stuff, so I can get scheduled for hearing, and that, that also that the city has adequate time to accommodate the requirement for public hearing and notification and that sort of thing. So hopefully, we'll be seeing them at the council level. The activities at the Planning Commission for the plat and the CUP have been addressed. They are still working on their adjustment, submittal, that sort of thing, so that we can get them scheduled for hearings at the city council level. Other things, the Met Council has approved the city's Conference of Plan amendments, and so that action to request putting that into effect and formally, formally adopting it at the local level will be on our city council agenda next Tuesday, as well as a request to rescind the moratorium. And so, once those activities are done, we will no longer be on moratorium for multifamily. So we got done, I think that went into place in March, and we should be done by January. So the council, we hope, is going to, and the Planning Commission, we hope, is, is favorable to that. We certainly did that as quick as we could, following the Conference of Plan health check last February, March, and April. So that's very favorable news. With that, I, I don't have anything else, short of, I just hope everybody had a really, really nice holiday season, and be careful walking outside.
Sarah, excuse me, I have a real quick question. Pardon me. The Dwayne Sixty Sectional Stacey, where are we at with that?
I think we're waiting for them. We approved this conditional use permit, it's been recorded.
Okay.
Maybe they're waiting for spring.
Okay, I missed that several people.
Yeah, I haven't, I, we're done with our end of it.
We are, okay.
Yep, yep, it's, it's in their court. My guess is that they're probably working on building permits, because they have to get commercial plans, but, but we do know, because I got the recorded resolution back about a month ago from the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.[1782.04]